...of Appeals Public Hearing on April 28, 2021. It is seven o'clock. Tune in my left. We're getting a little echo here. To my left is Baron. I'm Peter Shondick, Chair, and to my right is Paul. I'll get it right one of these times. Blue leg. Close enough?
It's close enough.
These proceedings are being transcribed and recorded to provide full and accurate minutes and allow full participation of the clerk. So, yeah, I did it. Requested that clerk read the petition. This is a continuance.
The Rainham Board of Appeals will open and hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 7, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. at Rainham Veterans Memorial Town Hall, 558 South Main Street regarding the application of Rainham Riverwalk LLC of 525 Church Street, Rainham, Mass. for a comprehensive permit to construct 138 ownership units with 35 affordable units on 33.4 acres of vacant land located at Zero New State Highway Route 44, Rainham Assessors Map 16, Lot 55. And we do have the certified parties listed.
Okay. All right. Put his list. And do we have any correspondents to add to? I know we have a lot of correspondents.
We have quite a few letters.
If you want to read them into the...
Sure. Start with the Town of Rainham Fire Department. "Board of Appeals, we have reviewed the Rainham Riverwalk LLC project located at 1775 New State Highway. The project proposes the construction of 138 condominiums located between Route 44 and Church Street. The street layout and common driveways within the development will accommodate apparatus during responses. The location of the fire hydrants appears to address our needs. If any changes are made to the current plan, please let us know. Any questions, please contact me, Chief Brian LaSavita." I hope I said that correct.
And do we have any others?
Yes. We have a letter from the Board of Sewer Commissioners. During a meeting dated November 18, 2020, the applicant and his applicant of this development was requested a waiver from the Zone Board of Appeals under Section D, Rainham General Bylaw, Article 2, building sewers and connections. The Sewer Commission has requested that the Zone Board of Appeals not grant this particular waiver as requested until the applicant had come before the Board of Sewer Commissioners to discuss the project and associated fees that would go along with it. The applicant did approach the Board of Sewer Commissioners on two such occasions. The Sewer Commission meeting dated December 10, 2020, and a meeting dated January 14, 2021. The Board of Sewer Commission, working with the applicant of this project to bring affordable housing to the town, came to a mutual agreement on the connection fees for this project. Based on the 103 market rate units and the 35 low-pressure sewer connection points within the development, it was determined that the total fee will be $367,500. The permit fees will be issued at $10,500 per each 35 at such time when the applicant pulls each individual permit. It was also explained to the applicant that regardless of if in his design, he reduces the amount of connection points, the total amount due will still be $367,500. Please note that the $367,500 fee referenced above is inclusive of all applicable sewer fees, including connection, inflow, and infiltration. Furthermore, at this time, there is sufficient sewer capacity for this project to proceed. The applicant states that this development will remain private. It is requested that a homeowners' association agreement be required for the maintenance of the low-pressure sewer system within the development as part of the waiver request. The applicant also states that he will follow all the technical aspects of the Sewer Department. Some technical questions were posed to the applicant related to the low-pressure line, size, and connection point to the municipal sewer. If during the design phase of the project, the Board of Sewer Commissioner feels as though the project should be reviewed by the Sewer Commission Consulting Engineer as it relates to the connection point to the municipal sewer system, then the applicant will be responsible for the cost of that review. Also to note, the applicant has suggested possibly connecting this project to a manhole on Church Street. If this turns out to be the case, he will need to obtain a road opening permit through Rainham Highway Department to access a manhole. A question is also posed about the utility power backup generators to maintain the system in the event of a power failure. The applicant stated that he is working on this with the TMLP and plans on providing backup power for the sewer pumping systems. The applicant suggests that he will be utilizing an E1 pumping system throughout the subdivision. The Sewer Department requests that as a part of this installation, the applicant's design engineer stamped and certified that the system is installed and tested based on E1 pump manufacturer specifications. As part of the technical aspects of the installation, the Sewer Department will also be requesting inspection and pressure testing of the system prior to it being activated. The Board of Sewer Commissioners has come to a mutual agreement with the applicant as mentioned and would approve the zoning board moving forward with this particular waiver request as noted with these stipulations. Signed, the Superintendent and the Commissioners.
Can the other correspondent?
Yes, sir, we do. Okay. From the Rainham Center Water District. This is...I have reviewed the plan sent to me on Monday, the 26th. I have also reviewed the comments from the respondent, and I do have a comment below concerning the answer from Number 9 under comments on the project site plans related to the location of water services. The respondent states, "The plan will show water lines on the individual building permit plans. Typically, the location of any proposed service taps, curb stops, and the service line water main to curb stop are shown on the roadway plan. These are lines that would typically be installed under the roadway pavement or sidewalks. The line from the curb stop to the buildings is typically shown on the building permit plan. I would request that the proposed water service line locations be added to the plan similar to the sewer stub shown. The Water District has no issues with the layout of the water mains as shown on the plan provided as revised for 192021. The only other item we would like to confirm is that the Water District will receive a copy of the as-built utility plan showing the final water line, main gate valves, and curb box locations for each service once the project is complete. Respectfully, John R. Chase." This one doesn't have a letterhead on it, but...oh, this is a letter from the Selectmen, apparently. "We, the Selectmen for the Town of Rainham, support the approval and development of the 138-unit Rainham Riverwalk project, as the same will provide quality and moderate income housing for the citizens of Rainham and surrounding towns." With three members signing. Okay. What do we have here? The agenda. Minutes. And the last one would be the report by J.C. Engineering. Did we want to read that into the record?
I don't think we need to read that whole thing.
Thank you, J.C.
I believe someone from J.C. Engineering is on Zoom, so if there are any questions that need to be addressed.
That would be fantastic.
Unless you want to get your reading. All right. I'd like to administer the oath for anyone who intends to give testimony. If you go along with me, all who intend to give testimony, please rise. Do you strongly swear that the testimony you are about to give this board shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Anyone there? Okay. I see a show of hands. Yeah. Okay. So, would someone like to speak for the petitioner at this time? Are you muted? I think our speaker is muted in here because of the echo. I think he muted. Hold on one minute with technical difficulties. Can't make it easy. If it doesn't work, we'll just have to read the engineering report. Okay. All right. We'll have to use the phone instead of the speaker, but...would someone like to speak?
Yes, thank...Mr. Chairman, Peter Freeman, attorney for the petitioner. You can hear me now, I assume?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So, I will be brief, but I'll introduce everybody just to refresh everybody's memory. Any members of the public, the petitioner, the principal, Dan Andre is here, Evan Watson, our civil engineer, and Alana Quirk from my office. So, we're here to say a few words, some of us, and answer any questions. In a nutshell, what we thought...what I think I would do is just basically go over what you just read, so that's very brief. We believe that, you know, the sewer is all set and that we would ask in the decision that you give permission to connect to the sewer and you agreed on the fees because the applicant has agreed on the fees, that you establish these in the decision as stated in the letter, and that we comply, you know, the condition that the applicant comply with those technical things as stated in that letter. So, I think sewer is at this point pretty easy. With water, it's pretty close in that the technical aspects are all fine in terms of being able to connect, which again, we'd ask that be granted in the decision, and the technical things as well. The one thing, as stated in the letter, the amount of the fees isn't agreed to yet, and we basically would say this. At the last hearing, Alana Quirk, who had gone to the meetings, several meetings with the Water Commissioners, had stated legal reasons that, you know, we thought that the fees, aside from it being a 40B, they're, you know, it's reasonable to ask for a reduction to help the project, but that there were some, you know, legal issues in terms of whether it's exer...we established a term, what the state law is in terms of, you know, fees for something like this. So, actually, Ms. Quirk had gone over that last week. There's been since then, correspondence of a very legal nature between Ted Pitnick, the town attorney, your attorney, and Ms. Quirk. I think that Mr. Pitnick might have also attended one of the Water Commissioners' meetings. But in a nutshell, you know, we just wanted to say that we still take the position that the amount that the commission wants to chart, um, and, you know, we would leave it to the board and see what you could do. It also would relate if everything else is done, subject to talking about some conditions that, you know, the pretty much everything is covered, in our opinion, and so the hearing we think could be closed. And then, issues, whether I direct the decision, I certainly would work with Mr. Pitnick and, you know, get this show on the road in terms of wrapping it up, and there certainly are comments by Mr. Churchill, so when I say that things are just about covered, I didn't mean to ignore that. I know that you're here from him tonight, and Evan Watson, our engineer is here, he's worked with him, and, you know, certainly there are a lot of comments, but we certainly believe that, you know, the final plans will show everything to everybody that it's actual. So, basically, that's where we're at unless, Dan, you wanted to add anything, and if not, then I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you would like to have Churchill or from Evan Watson in terms of where he's at with the plan, the back and forth with Mr. Churchill. Do you want to add anything, Dan?
No, I think you've covered it all, and Evan has all current information on the design and what we've been working on, so I think we'll turn it over to Evan.
Very good. Chairman, I'm Evan Watson with W. Engineering, the applicant engineer for the project. I couldn't have permission to share my screen. We can put the plans up on the screen.
Sure.
Okay, we just need to make me presenter. There we go.
No way to get them up here.
Okay, I think everybody can see the plan on the screen.
Yeah. Evan, are these the ones dated April 19?
That's correct. So, we initially submitted a full set of design plans. If you recall, the initial submission that we had was an overall plan. We did that overall plan in our initial submission, because we were going along with requirements of the comprehensive permit. In those requirements, it says we need to show the layout in a general manner, the number of years in a general manner, drainage in a general manner, and essentially everything in a general manner. After that meeting, the board requested that we prepare some more detailed plans beyond what was required. So, we did that, and that was March 1st plan set. And that set of plans was subsequently set out to J.C. for a third-party review. They have gotten back to us, and they had some great comments, and so they caught a lot of the things that I missed. So, I revised the set of plans and prepared a response letter addressing how all the comments were met or how we are going to meet them. So, that's what's presented here in the April 19 plan set. Again, we showed layout in more than just a general manner. We stepped in and we showed individual site layout plans. These plans also present information that we've taken from the board. If you recall, we had been asked to add some additional parking areas, so we've separated out the old yard through here to make it two lanes to have some parallel parking, added removed the mailbox to a more central location that's away from the intersection. And then, we've also incorporated, if you recall, we had a Vanessa, so she gets prepare a traffic report, which had a few recommendations in it, so we made all their recommendations. Essentially, they were mostly cited things about making sure that we had proper turning radius for the fire apparatus and that we had enough distance for...we'll go to the next page here. When we have a sidewalk coming through here, that there is additional space provided so that in addition to the driveway, you could still go across the driveways on the sidewalk on the road in between the driveways and the traveled way. Many comments that we received from J.C. Wilson. Let me just finish going through the plans here. So, these are the layout plans. We also provided a set of utility plans. This shows the location of the water and sewer and electric. For this project, we're not proposing gas. Maybe if you have any questions about the type of fixtures you're proposing in these units, you could speak to that a little later, but I think he's using all high-efficiency electric appliances in these units that won't require gas or oil. So, then, see, with these utility plans, we've shown all that. The final design, again, from the sewer line, these E1 systems, they're going to be maintained, operated by F.R. Mahoney. They, I believe, have their own engineers on staff, but if they don't, then I will certainly be reviewing their calculations and their design. I'm familiar with doing these. I've done a bunch of these. You see them a lot in, like, conservation subdivisions where the lots are a little bit smaller and you have shared set-out systems and things, so I'm definitely familiar with designing these, so I can...one of the comments from the Sewer Department was to provide a scant drawing or calculations for that, so we'd be happy to provide that. That'd be easy to do. The other thing, we had some other comments about utilities from the Water Department, asking that we show water stubs, and I think that's a great idea, that makes a lot of sense. I haven't submitted revised plans yet, because I didn't think it would be appropriate to do so until we have the input from the board, but I think go through and make those changes to the plan, where we show curb stops in each individual unit and the sewer, et cetera, all through here, so that can easily be put onto the plan, and we can provide that information to accommodate those comments from the Water Department. And on this plan, you can see we added the fire hydrants throughout. Those comply with the town standards, and you received a letter from the Fire Department to say that he was satisfied with that. The other component that should be mentioned is that all these units, I believe it's over two units, and that requires fire protection within the house, so all these homes will have household sprinkler systems in every home. So, I think that's a great feature to have when you're in these houses. Then we have the grading drainage plan. I've been a few mistakes in here with the piping. It was great that J.C. was able to pick up on that, so I've went through and presented design calculations for every single pipe and revised all the pipes so that they work for up to the 25-year design storm, which is the requirement in the Town of Rainham. We presented that information on the plans, so I took, I think, one pipe, which is in the letter, which was easier, I just had the number backwards. So, on this plan, this presents the grading and the drainage piping. This works. One comment we received from J.C. is he has some concern about this slope along this side to make sure that we didn't go over the property line and where the limits of workwear, et cetera. This work was actually done already. If you recall, the original property line for this lot here actually came out into the property. So, the land swap was done, and that's done with the planning board, and it's on file. So, we acquired the land here in exchange for providing him with a buffer here. So, Dan's actually already put in this slope and has installed a definitely pretty nice-looking fence that's a little better than I could do. I don't know the style you'd call it, but it's more of a, I guess, a type of fence you'd see on, like, a horse stable or something, and it is a view screen. That's one of the...hey, the board members has gone through it here recently, but there definitely is a fence that, right on the property line, that was staked out by Lighthouse Lands today. So, that's right there. I'm not sure on this plan, but we can indicate that. Right, we started moving through the grading drainage plans. And we just indicate the grating throughout here. We've added a little more detail behind these units. I think one of the comments was I did figure a contour line here, so we can add that without issue. And the other thing that was not shown on these plans was the erosion control, limit of clearing, so that will definitely be shown on the plan, and the conservations definitely going to want to see where the limit of clearing and erosion control limits are. So, that will definitely happen. And then, again, the only other...there's one last mistake that I made, which this pipe shows 19.3 here and 19 there, it needs to be reversed, so that's no problem. We can fix that up. Those provide site details of all the drainage infrastructure, the water infrastructure, et cetera. And we have the detail of the E1 grinder pumps, the service connections, the grate inlets, air dam protection, sidewalk, pavement depth, et cetera. This is about Hydro International First Defense. It's a stormwater water quality device, but we've designed that to treat the water quality volume, you know, close to GTP guidance. They have a new standard that they put out recently, over the last five years or so. And J.C. asked for a little more information that I'm not in contact with Hydro. I've used these on a bunch of sites, and they're really great because they, number one, they do a good job treating the water. It basically comes in here, goes in this lower chamber, swirls around, and then clean water comes out. Any petroleum, the oil in here, it can flow up to the top, and any dirt or any thing swirls all around, it's stored in the bottom. And then, the thing I like best about this type of device is it's easy to clean. If you can see here, you open the manhole, there is simply a hole in the middle that can be cleaned out with a back truck. And that will all be in the operation and maintenance plan that will be put together as part of our NIPs filing and our stormwater report that goes to conservation. Typically, those are all put into the homeowners' association documents as far as what the operation and maintenance is. I think that was a comment from both the Water Department and Sewer Department, and we have an operation maintenance plan in the homeowners' association, and so the amount that it takes to maintain all these devices and everything will be calculated, adjusted for inflation, and then an account set up, and then the homeowners' fee will be associated with that. We have a potential safety detail. We did receive a few comments. He wanted to see a few little bit different treatment here on the bottom, which we can accommodate without issue. I did have a note on here that doesn't belong there. And then, we have an outlet structure. This is very similar to the outlet structure. I actually did the design for Beverly Road, over at the Beverly Road extension, for Long Hills, where I was at a different company. And so, what we have here is an outlet structure that has a slot in the front of it and then a pipe behind it, so it might have been unclear down the calculations that both of those outlets were there, but the water flows through this slot and then through the pipe, and that's there to make sure that we can accommodate all ranges of storms. So, it's actually kind of neat, because the higher the water gets, the larger the outlet gets. If it doesn't get too large, like through a pipe, it's always through that slot. So, I found that those work out really, really well. But that's the plans. Here's the comment letter from J.C. in the first couple pages. I always like to see this as addressed by the applicant. He has a comment that the sewer main and water main should be 10 feet apart. That's the standard code. I agree with that. I think we did a good job making sure all this stuff works here. Talking about the wetlands, yeah, we'll make sure that we comply with the wetlands crossing. Again, if you recall, this project has an approved wetland crossing, so we're going to utilize that same crossing, and the replication area is moved over a little bit, but we can provide the same size, so we'll be going over that with them. I have some more signage, which we don't mind, and maybe more some directional for the directions for the owners. It's maybe more some directional for the, direction for the owners. On the layout plans. Did add some signs in here, so we added a keep right. This R four dash seven eight, that's the M U C D standard designation. So it's the little arrow to the right. And we actually added some yellow lines in here to help that. And trying to keep the boats wiping down as much as possible, you know, as much as, and just to make sure we keep that residential feel and make it so this doesn't feel more like a parking lot with an arrow in every which direction. But we can add some more signs and we'd be happy to add that. Have J C take a look. Some of the other things worth noting, this intersection here needs to be reviewed by Mass Highway or Mass D O T. And they will not really review or especially issue a permit until all our permits have been issued. Makes things somewhat complicated. Planning board usually deals with that. A lot of planning board meetings and, you know, we come, we come up with our best design here with the planning board and then we go to the D O T and they say, well, we want you to add, change this radius to a thirty or add a little more scribing aside here and there. So the actual blue gray signs and all that stuff will be finalized and developed as part of that highly access permit. So we can add all those signs and anything else that's needed. Um, there's a concern about backing up new turns. This is my cat going here and I just briefly did a little analysis here. This is the step path analysis for a single unit push toe vehicle, which single unit is essentially a Chevy Suburban. It's the largest passenger vehicle it can make. So if this person does back out of the driveway and wants to reverse direction, there's plenty of room to spin right around at the end of that island. Keep in mind that although we're asking people to go one way on each one of these with the keep right sign, these are twenty-four and twenty-two feet wide, which is plenty wide enough to maneuver that. Not any issues, so. And crosswalk position should be continuous. And we want to make sure we have ramps. So I indicated a ramp, an R right here at the end of each one. Believe it or not, it's relatively detailed, the amount of work it takes to put in all the detail for each individual ramp. So if we have the situation where we have an end of a sidewalk, there's a certain kind of ramp. If it's in a radius, it's another kind of ramp. If it's on a flat side, it's on another kind of ramp. So we would have no problem providing a separate U D A compliance plan. Part of the condition of approval to make sure we have all that. The other question he had was to make sure that we have continuous access. So all the way from forty-four, an access through here. We might, if you want, we can add a couple of crosswalks in here, but I'm just adding the crosswalks through the main drag, which would be the most traffic and near the stop signs. And then when we come across a, those driveways like this, obviously the sidewalk comes to an end, we give ramps down. It's not painted through here, it's not raised, but there is a four wide width of unstruck asphalt from each side to each side outside of the traveled way and outside of the driveway. And that was per the recommendation of our traffic consultant on the report that they gave us. Yeah, so we removed the gas, so he just wanted some more information on that potentially. Water main and services, like so we can do that for sure. We have like some positive feedback from the water department. And they want, this mirror, this here is the comment by the sewer department to provide final plan so we can do that. There's another comment about the water line. So we'll definitely be having those plans accepted by the water department before we move ahead. This comment, if it be a roadway, you would show a roadway profile. But in this site, because we have such varying widths and cross sections and things, I did not do a profile, but if the water department wants me to do a profile, I can provide that. And we talked about the two to one slope, so that's essentially already there. This comment here, he's asking me to do a little more downstream analysis or upstream analysis, rather. One of these. I was just flipping through quickly here. In the existing condition, there's a pipe that comes off of forty-four and goes into a ditch that goes across the site. So what we want to do is essentially take that pipe, it's a twenty-four inch pipe, it's at twenty-six percent slope. So I've put in a twenty-four inch pipe at point eight percent slope and run it across here. The new pipe has more capacity, however, he wants me to analyze this. There's some engineering reasons why I won't say all the specifics to everybody more than I already have. But that's an easy thing to do and I can provide that to him. And that long short, be reviewed during the conservation project process with the finalized stormwater report. I keep accidentally flipping through this. This was just, I think this is in your packet. This was the landscaping for the entrance. So if anybody had questions on what that was, I'll just close back because I keep flipping over to it. Um, again, I think I addressed this, the water quality devices, you want to see a little more information on that, which we can certainly provide. He is saying that we did not provide the D E P stormwater standards. So the calculations that we provided do show compliance with the out of Rainham standards that we decrease the rate of runoff. And we make sure that we don't have anything untreated, fully comply with. These will, this is a requirement by D E P, the Mass D E P stormwater standards, and priority authority for that is still the conservation commission. So we will definitely be going next right away.
Except in a forty B, Evan, wouldn't, wouldn't that still be under the purview of the zoning board of appeals? Then subsequently subject to the conservation commission?
Yeah, so let me just jump for a second. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
In a nutshell, I think most of what Evan's referring to is under the state weapons protection act here, we already have an approved crossing and various things, the modifications, but we definitely before the conservation, state wetlands protection. As to the local wetlands bylaws, we have asked waivers, main one being that we don't go to the conservation commission. That's where Mr. Member, yes, that's by the C B A. So we don't have to go to the conservation commission under the local bylaw. We've, or, and I was just looking at them, we've asked for just a few specific waivers from specific sections and, you know, certainly go over those at any time. Those would be within the purview of the C B A based on a request of the state dealt with by the conservation.
I mean, Evan, not that I doubt that you won't meet the standards, I just thought that since you were already preparing them, I was wondering why they didn't get submitted. You know what I mean?
So that's a good question. So the, that report and the final stormwater report, it's relatively large and has a lot of fine detail that anytime something's changed in the slightest, it basically changes everything. So since we're dealing with a lot of zoning issues here, we want to make sure that the zoning board was happy with the layout, was happy with the roadwoods, was happy with all that information before we went to conservation and that we could complete the very fine detailed design that's required there. To piggyback on what Peter was saying, the C B A will be handling the local bylaw, you know, essentially for the conservation commission, but the order of conditions, the notice of intent, and jump in here if I'm incorrect, but it's the, it's a state permit that's issued by the conservation commission. So we'll be, we do have to go with them for that. It's just the local bylaw. So not all towns have a local bylaw in their conservation commission, Rainham does. So that's where you would be taking oversight, but the state permit of the order of conditions that we already have one, but needs to be updated will be through conservation.
That's correct. And as to the, as to the D E P stormwater guideline, what Evan said is very typical of forty B projects, they're very detailed analysis, right, and each, but what he said in getting your, your okay, essential layout and the detail, that's what's often done and is totally appropriate. I moved it with a draft. When we get to that, it would be that, you know, the D E P stormwater guideline, by law, and that the necessary, uh, uh, order of condition that's involved from the conservation, the state weapons protection act, so that's where those, those are indeed fleshed out. And they're very detailed, there are no ways to, they probably show that. Fireworks were filing, but the conservation condition under the state act are much more onerous than under even regular filings would certainly for forty Bs.
Yeah, and it was that these remaining comments are essentially things that I'd like to address during that period. And we have things about a small increase, increase in volume off site, wants us to take a look at that, which is that standard, we can do that. We have some comments about some test pits and ensuring that we have the water table and we can do that. That's again, part of that very detailed report that, see, the C B A usually doesn't see those reports, planning board and conservation, but they're usually about that big or so. So all that will be in that report for sure and be reviewed. Likely that's going to be reviewed by J C Engineering as part of their, the conservation's third party review.
So have you not?
I need to send a few. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Have you not done test pits yet on the site? I assume you've been in early filing, right?
Yes, so the approved design, there was test pits done for that.
Right.
And so I'd used, I was able to use that information to understand the site. So the soil maps are available to me, say that it has very sandy soils. The test pits that were done confirmed that, they did some perk tests. They were all of the highest rate between two and five minutes per inch. And that's what I would expect to see throughout the whole site. Dan's actually done some site work out there already on an existing permit. And I've visited the site and his material was actually so good, I don't think he had to bring in a lot. He just, he had a very good mineral soil there, it was all sandy and that drains very, very well. So, but it is good engineering practice to confirm that. So where we have our proposed basin, we will certainly commence to do a test it over and make sure that our design is good. But yeah, the short answer is that we did the test. We, there are test pits on the plan. So yeah, the comment about design, the sewer, the sewer should go to the sewer department, which we'll do. Water main should oversee my water district, which we'll do. This is not a problem again, it's more of a script than anything here, which changes that pipe around. The T S S removal rate with the first of the stormwater units, it's likely he's just not familiar with this type of unit and we can provide that in the main stormwater report. Emergency power for the sewer pumps, so Dan said he was going to be working on that. I can let him speak to that. Phasing for construction of the development. Right now, I'm not aware of any phasing. I think we can go start to finish, but it's probably not a bad idea to put together a phasing plan. We can do that as a condition. And we certainly wouldn't want to have a turnaround, the only turnaround available in somebody's driveway, you know, so we construct the roadway and then start building the units off of that so we can develop a construction phasing document. Erosion control, again, that's not only part of the order of condition requirements that that's shown, but a project of this size is required to get a N I P D S or National Pollution, is it National Pollution Elimination System, something like that. And we have to create a stormwater pollution management plan. That's a federal permit that we want to get. So both local conservation, state D E P and E P A will be requiring that, but we'll be having a lot of information for that. Same thing with the long-term operation, I think his plan will be in the report. Question about whether we're doing slab on grade basis. I think about all these, there'd be slab on grade, there might be a few that have a slope that goes off in the back, which will have a basement, but at least eighty percent will be slab on grade and that's what Dan was moving ahead with on his architecturals. But if you have any questions about the basements or what Dan has had information to. And then there's a texture base in detail, we can fix that up with the final design. And that, there's a few areas where he has some concern about stormwater from these areas over here not being treated, because it sheds off onto the ground, so that we can adjust that through either our report or we can add some type of, you know, grass strip or a pipe that brings that water around. So again, the three final design and the order of condition documents, we can put that together. Agreed with him there, we can redo that. So I think that's everything. Again, just to reiterate, is, you know, we've shown everything here in the, the way that forty B regulations require us to show, showing all the way we connect all of our utilities, how our road network connects, of the layout of all the units, answered all of our questions with the board. We took in some great input from the board about adding some parking, things of that nature, so we've planned that to add that. And I think the process went really well. We received great comment from all the utilities and the fire chief. And we do have a few engineering things to hammer out, but the approval of this plan wouldn't allow us to, you know, start construction right now. The next step after this approval would allow us to then go to conservation and file for our amended order of condition. We would then also file for, begin the We would then also file for, begin the, um, MEBO process by filing our, um, environmental notification form with them, and we have, um, I think we need for land disturbance and for trip ends for the number of parking spaces here, but that's another permit that we'd be seeking, and then the final permit would be the highway access permit. And typically, when we go through that process, if there's any changes that are made and violating anything that, um, this board's come up with, um, or even if it hasn't been changed at all, um, those plans would then come back to you for their, the final say on, here's the plans that we've, we've come up with, you then say, um, these comply with the conditions that we came up with, or they do not, and we keep, uh, to have a conversation then. But, um, I just wanted to really mention to the board that, you know, this isn't the final, final plan that is going to be approved and used for construction. But, um, that's it for me, so unless, uh, Peter or you or Lionel have anything to add here, um, any questions from the board?
Thank you, Evan, that's very thorough, and, you know, the rest, uh, which I had said that I think earlier, so we can fully understand that, that there's a condition for, you know, the final, going through those other test pits, so, that's, that's clearly what we wanted to present, and, and all of that, so, thank you.
Okay, um, you broke up a little bit, but, um, uh, John, uh, do you have any comments as far as, uh, um, they addressed everything in your peer review? Mr. Churchill?
Uh, hi, just hope you can hear me all right.
Yeah.
This is Brian Wallace, uh, with DTE Engineering. Um, I worked, uh, you know, I did a lot of the, um, review in which on this, um, very familiar with, uh, the content of that report, um, and I, I do appreciate Evan, um, going through those comments, and, uh, a lot of our questions were answered tonight, um, that we had, uh, in our report that we had issued today, um, and, you know, I do understand that at this point in time, um, sort of the, the details, the level of details on the plan, uh, are going to go through a much more refined process as, uh, they go in front of the other, um, you know, conservation, uh, going through the MEBO process, a massive key, um, you know, a lot of the, the finer details will be worked out. Um, so, you know, we, we, from this meeting, um, you know, this is the first time sort of hearing what has been discussed so far with the board and, uh, sort of what their expectations are for the plan at this time, um, so they could understand that, and I extremely think that the, the engineer, uh, applicant have some, some issues to work out, sort of the finer details of the plan go, uh, for the drainage, um, and, uh, the layout questions we had, which is kind of what we're answering tonight, um, so, you know, there's certainly things before construction that would need to be worked out, um, but I think, um, if the board, uh, has, you know, sort of the premise of the plan that they need tonight, um, you know, I think th- those other details will be worked out.
Okay, thank you. Any, anyone else with, uh, comments either for or against the project?
Was, was Dan going to talk about the power-
I would just like to make, uh, a comment, this is Dan Andridge, the owner and managing partner of Rainham Riverwalk. The landscape plan that Evan kept, uh, that kept coming up on Evan's is the thing, we had hired a landscape architect to come up with a plan for the Church Street entrance. That's the two, uh, coming off of Church Street, there's two residential houses, and, uh, we wanted to make sure that those residential houses were, uh, well protected and had plenty of screening and a buffer. I did do, um, a, basically a weave, it's called a weave fence around a good majority of the property, uh, around where all the, uh, butters are, and along that entrance that also has the weave fence coming up at Church Street will have, there must be seventy different types of trees and low spreading bushes, along with two, uh, small stone parallel walls up in the front, and that will, uh, that will give them, the neighbors plenty of protection. They both, uh, can see the plan, they're aware of it, and their signatures are also on that letter, that form that I had, I had submitted to you with, uh, uh, majority of the owners of the butters within three hundred feet all, uh, signed a letter stating that they saw the plans, reviewed the plans, and they have no objection. So, it's, uh, you know, it's our goal to make sure we, we stay friendly with the neighbors. We live here, I live on Church Street, my parents live here, my daughter lives here. We don't plan on moving anywhere, so this is going to be a long, uh-
Old size one of these.
You know, good four-year project anyway, and, uh, I don't plan on moving out of town because I'm building a, this size project, so we plan on making sure everything is done right. On the E1 system, I do have, uh, E1 themselves, they're located out of New York, and they're doing the design on the E1 Boss Main sewer. Um, Evan will do, will incorporate that onto his plans, but they will, uh, they make the pump system, and so I felt that having them the actual design, uh, would be a good thing, so they're going to be working on that along, once they're done with that, then the, the project is turned over to the association. The Mahoney Company, who is the local distributor, and the only distributor around here for E1, they will be managing and maintaining our system, unlike other sewer systems throughout the town area, you have the sewer department managing them. Well, we have a private company that's going to be managing the sewer system, and they do it all from computer. All of these pumps, they'll be able to look online, uh, and see which, uh, which pumps are, if, if any of the pumps are weak, uh, pumping capacity, and they will, uh, they'll monitor the entire project to make sure that there's no, no pumps, uh, go, go down. They would rather take them out, replace them, rebuild them before, uh, that happens. And I did commit to putting generators throughout the site, we may have two or three buildings on one generator, and all of that will be located on our final plans. I have, uh, TMLP, my brother Brian, who's Andrea Electric, he's working with TMLP, I'm working with all that. So, we do have, we do have, uh, additional work, uh, will be on the final plans, and, uh, basically tonight, we just need your okay to move forward, so we can start firing with the other departments and complete, uh, the full detailed plans, and, and then I will have the architects also start working on my final drafts of my architectural plans for the buildings, and that will also be in our packet that we will re-admit to you at the end of the process. So, that's all I'd have to add, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else, um, in Zoomland, uh, either for or against the project, any comments?
Evan, can you unshare?
There you go.
Reading my mind.
Now, Evan, uh, I think it was Evan, you mentioned that the, the crosswalks, uh, have that four-foot swath at the end of the driveways. Uh, I was noticing the driveways do have some sort of separation, like either lawn or, or something, so that, um, you won't have issues of cars parking on the either side, but that doesn't go all the way down and, and it allows a, a walkway for people that are walking on the sidewalk?
That's correct, when there is sidewalks on either side, those islands will trim back so that, um, there's enough room to walk through, and once that sidewalk is non, other islands go out to the travel lane.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Dan, when you were talking about the generators, what are you anticipating you're going to power that with at this point? I understand we're a little early, but you're talking propane or?
Yes, I'm looking at, uh, where the generator's going to be located, we plan on putting in five-hundred gallon, uh, in-ground, underground propane tanks.
Gotcha.
And again, that'll all be shown, uh, on the plans, and, uh, basically, we'll have a, part of our full maintenance package in our, of operations for the association will be, uh, with the generators also, because they will have to have a yearly inspection, and every other week, they'll be running off at certain times to, uh, just do a, a basic start, they run fifteen, twenty minutes, and then they shut down, and that's certainly done every, uh, every week or two. We'll have a full package on the individual, uh, generator system as part of the final backup.
Any questions? Are you there?
No questions.
Any more questions?
I think I've poked around.
Okay. One, one thing I do want to address, um, is I know you were, uh, requesting us to waive the fees for the water, and, um, as, as that goes, it is not a practice of ours to, uh, tread on other people's, uh, domain, if you will, uh, that is something that you will have to work out with the water department, and, uh, I'll state that in the conditions, but, um, uh, we are, we are not in the practice of, of waiving fees for, or, or even, you know, getting into what departments charge for their fees, that's their, their domain and, uh, their knowledge of their area, so, um, that is not something we are going to do, but we will put it into a, a condition, um, if you will, as far as where you'd have to work it out with them.
Yeah, we, we understand that, and, you know, uh, if that's where you're at, then, you know, Dan, you certainly can say something, but you've heard the arguments, so again, I don't feel any need to be redundant, if, if that's what you do, I, I understand that. Um, as long as, like I said in my remarks at the beginning, given the letters from both sewer and water that are all the technical obstinacy ability, that, you know, the permit is clear that we, we, the applicant has the right to act, um, and, uh, you know, follow the technical things from the sewer and water flow, you know, that we have the water and sewer through this permit, when the sewer, the fees happen to be agreed to, so they can be in your decision as well, on the water, you know, we understand now what you're saying on the fees, so, so I understand that.
Okay.
Did we get, did we get, uh, anything from town council on that? I know they were sent.
He's ready.
Oh.
Do you want to? I, I can't hear what you said.
Last, last meeting, they presented how certain fees were lawful or unlawful, or warranted or unwarranted, and we said, okay, that's an interesting presentation, but, so, so,
you know, I've had, uh, multiple conversations and emails back and forth today with, uh, Attorney Court, and, uh, we've had a deep discussion, I also had, uh, several discussions with Attorney Rick Bentley, who represents the water department.
Yeah.
So, um, what Peter had indicated is basically where we stand.
Cool.
Everybody has a better understanding as to what, uh, the town, I, I guess there was no movement whatsoever, and now there's been at least a basic conversation about what the town, from my perspective, what the town's position is, she was very clear to me as to what their position is, and, uh, my suggestion to everybody is that a number can and should be worked out.
Okay.
So, uh, any, anything that you do tonight in terms of by way of approval will be conditioned upon those folks working out a number.
Thank you.
Are there any other pertinent comments from anyone, either for or against? Okay, so at this time, I'm going to, uh, clear the public hearing closed, all may remain while the board deliberates, but none may speak, so, um, what you might have, now you probably understand what we're saying, um, pretty much they've addressed everything from JC Engineering.
I agree.
And the preliminary.
I got to say, uh, those sewer pumps are awesome.
Yeah.
They work like a charm. That's, uh-
And, um, basically, we're, we're talking about approving it, but with the condition that the fee for the water, um, on the condition that, uh, the applicant work out any fee structure or, or dispute with the water department, not us.
And at the end of the day, whatever they-
And what's the water department's decision, not us, um, so, anything else that you want to add, or?
No, I just, I didn't, you know, I don't get to that point, I can motion that it's, what conditions are we, other than?
Well, basically, the, the main condition would be that we're-
The water.
Will approve it, and then-
Subject to plans coming back once they're-
Well, that's, that's-
Standard.
Part of the process anyway.
We see that anyways.
If they, if they make any type of significant change or, or any change, it'll have to come back before us. But the plans, as they are now, they've addressed the water, sewer has said, you know, as far as the, the design and everything.
Yep.
Everybody's, um, pretty much on board, um, the only sticking point is that fee that, you know, that's something they'd have to work out, so we can approve it contingent on, with the condition that they work out the fee with the water.
And that they work out the things in engineering that JC is already-
Almost all it's going to get picked up by the city and by Concom.
Yeah, and Concom's going to have to, you know, they'll have to go through all that also.
Right, but we can't, I mean, we can say that it has to be dealt with and not rely on another board not waiving something, you know what I mean? Just because something-
Yeah.
They couldn't, in theory, they could waive everything, not that they would.
Yeah, yeah, um, I doubt.
I mean, no.
But, you need to have a further review of changes as they go along.
Right, right.
Because obviously, the plan is not complete.
Right.
They've been very clear about that, not further, a lot to be done, so.
It's complete as it should be at this phase, but-
Yes, but you don't want to hold the whole thing up, so-
Yes, no, no, right.
You want to let them be able to move forward.
To start going.
Yep, and, and, uh, you want to see what Concom does, uh, all, all the things that they're talking about in there, you need to have the opportunity to review those further. So, it, it's an approval conditioned upon those several factors, I would suggest to you, it's up to you, gentlemen, but, you know, me.
I mean, that's, I think, more eloquently what I was trying to get.
So, um, so we need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the comprehensive permit, um, to Rainham Riverwalk LLC, Riverwalk LLC, um, on the condition that they negotiate a fee with the Rainham Center Water District, and the board has further, um, further review of any changes, major changes come over this plan. Sorry?
Is there any major changes?
Well, it's all-
Any.
Any changes to the plan.
And they're addressing the issues that were in the April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one letter from JC Engineering.
Okay. And also go over the conditions, oh, excuse me, the, uh, recommendations under JC's report dated, sorry, April twenty-eighth.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seem animus, so, okay, I'd like to reopen the meeting at eight, uh, twelve, um, and the board has had a unanimous decision, um, anyone having objections to the decision may file an appeal to the Superior Court, and that appeal shall be filed with the town clerk within twenty days of the filing of the board's decision of the town clerk. So, good luck, looks like it'll be a-
Thank you very much.
It'll be a nice addition.
Just thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Good night, very much.
Good night. So, I, we also have to, uh- So we also have to.
Approve the minutes.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
March twenty-fourth.
For March twenty-fourth, yes. Two thousand twenty-one. Do we need anything else? You need anything signed or anything or?
No, I haven't been signed.
Who wants to make the motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. I'm going to roll. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Team's adjourned it.